All right, I'd like to reconvene the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July 18th, 2025.
June?
Oh, my goodness, June, sorry, guys. June 18th, 2025. Fast forwarding. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we do not have our student board member today, so it's just gonna be...
Dr. Smith.
Yes, it will just be Dr. Smith.
Yeah, sorry.
Which should be short, because school is over.
Really, it really is. So, we did have Dr. Carrie Wright, the state superintendent. She came down and visited St. Mary's County Public Schools the afternoon after our last morning board meeting, and she started, she went to Lenartown Middle School first, and she got to see seventh grade stu-- sixth grade students in a science class held in the media center where they used Ozobots to talk about the faces of the moon, and then we moved out to an ELA class that was out in the open area at Lenartown Middle School where they were, they were writing stories about monarch butterfly migration, pretty interesting stuff. She then went to the James A. Forrest Current Technology Center where she got a tour of the building. Of course, many of the students had completed, have completed their program, but she did have a great session with all of our TAM students and talked to them about how valuable and wonderful it was to consider becoming a teacher, and a teacher in the state of Maryland, and more specifically, a teacher in the county, St. Mary's County. And then she went down into the engineering courses and classwork where she was quite taken by the electric car that they have, they have built. As you can see, she actually scaffolded the side and got inside of it, it was very nice. In fact, that made it into the MSE feed.
It did, and sound nice.
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty neat. We had the gateway celebration the last few, the last few days, that's the last celebration, the culminating celebration of all of the, the students who are in that program, and that kind of concluded our commencement exercises for the 2025 school year, wonderfully done. I had the opportunity to go to Mr. Farrell's class at Hollywood Elementary School for an end-of-the-year poem where it really, it's, it's four little lines, "I used to be, but now I am, I used to be, but now I am, I used to be, but now I am, I am." And the kids had a really interesting time, and they all wrote their poems, they were, they're very taken with all of that. For the Juneteenth celebration we had in St. Mary's County, St. Mary's County Public Schools was there with a table encouraging people to consider not only entering the classroom for St. Mary's County Public Schools, but also considering all of the other ways that you can come and work on behalf of children within the school system, and that many of those entry-level jobs may very well culminate with becoming a classroom teacher because we have multiple pathways, and I want to thank everybody for coming out for that. And then, Dr. Farrell joined, was up at the Blue Crabs baseball game, and he was delighted to see that we had Mr. Dove, the safety assistant from Hollywood Elementary School. He threw out the first pitch, Chopticon JROTC presented the flag, Hollywood Elementary School chorus sang the national anthem, it was really a beautiful night. Just a reminder that summer meals are available, you do have to pre-register if you go to our website, smcps.org, there is a link right there to, to, to sign up, and that'll be running all throughout the summer. And here we are in June, and we find ourselves really closing in, closing out the month. It has been a very long year, but I think we finished quite strong, and we, we found ourselves, found ourselves where we needed to be, and I want to thank again the support of the Board of Education, the support of our county commissioners, so that we were able to once again honor our negotiated agreement with all three of our units that were 11-for-11. So, for the last 11 years, you have found a way to get, to get us where we needed to be so that we could honor the commitments that we have on behalf of all of the staff who work on behalf of all of our kids. So, with that, we find ourselves at the end of June, and that's all I have. Thank you very much, Ms. Board Chair.
Okay. All right, so, we do not have any recognitions this evening, but we do have a public hearing on policy JCAA, which is the School Boundary Advisory Committee. So, I know Ms. Howell does not have a presentation, do we have anyone to speak on behalf of that?
I do not believe so, why does he sign up on the wrong sheet?
Okay.
Does anyone appear that we have any, if anyone did intend to speak?
Policy JCAA.
Okay, all right, so, the first reading was on May 7th, and then we offered revisions, which were then presented at the June 4th board meeting. So, those revisions are what stands right now, so if you still have any comments, I think the comment period will still be open, you can send them to the board, and then final approval, we'll have second reading, and then the final approval at the July 16th board meeting. So, okay, a public comment, I assume we have some? Okay. So, here's how it's gonna work, I'm gonna read this statement, Kim is gonna call you up, and you have three minutes, she'll set the timer, when you hear the timer go off, please wrap up your comments. Don't make me stop you in mid-sentence to say, "Please wrap up." Okay? So, you're gonna call the first person, and then I'll read this as they make their way.
The first person is Mr. Jim Davis.
Look at that, Jim, all right, you can mosey on up there, Jim, and I'll read this. Okay, so, "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about those two entities should be resolved at the level closest to the situation and/or directed to the superintendent. Please keep in mind that we also sit as the appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would impact our ability to deliberate." As I mentioned, you had to sign at the beginning of the meeting, you have three minutes, and you may not yield your time to someone else. Kim will keep the record, and Jim, you are on.
Thank you. My name is Jim Davis, I reside in Lenartown, Maryland, and good evening, Board members. I'm here this evening to urge the school board to honor one of, one of your own. His name is Dr. Salvador Marasba, who spent nearly half a century working for the local school systems, always dedicated to his students and committed to academic scholarship. As you are aware, we unexpectedly lost Dr. Rasba, and I'm here to ask that you honor his memory. There is an ancient proverb that a man never dies if his name is spoken. To me, there is no better way of remembrance than naming a school facility after Dr. Rasba. There is ample precedence for taking this action. Notable leaders, to this day, are remembered, including Letty Marshall Dent, who was the first female superintendent of the St. Mary's County Public Schools, Dr. James A. Forrest, George Washington Carver, and most recently, Captain Walter Francis Duke. Dr. Rasba's illustrious career began in Tennessee, where he received his bachelor's degree in chemistry. Upon receiving his degree, he noticed a job opening for a chemistry teacher in, in Maryland. After consulting his wife, Myra, they loaded up their belongings and ventured to Southern Maryland to start a new career. Their family has resided in the county for well over 50 years and counting. Myra also joined the St. Mary's County Public School System as a career teacher teaching English. His life in St. Mary's County was more than just teaching. While raising a large family, he undertook several business ventures, including farming tobacco, providing HVAC services to his clients, and starting a hazardous waste removal service supporting the naval base. Of importance, he worked tirelessly in supporting many major charities in the region. He was also honored by BECA, local service organizations such as Lexington Park Lines, Melvin Jones Award for Lifetime Community Service. The Honorable Steny Hoyer wrote Dr. and Mrs. Rasba into the Congressional Record for Leadership and Outstanding Education Educators for the Community. Over the years, Dr. Rasba has been a recipient of numerous awards and honors for his unselfish support and for, to St. Mary's County citizens. It should be noted that during his illustrious career, he elected to stay in this county instead of seeking higher educational rewards outside the area. This is because he was dedicated to his students. For this reason stated above, I humbly ask that the St. Mary's County Board of Education take every effort to consider my request to honor Dr. Rasba. I plan on reaching out to the public to ask that they review this proposal and contact the board directly in support of my recommendations. I might add that about 20 minutes ago, Dr. Mike Martin-Ronaldt called me as I was walking in, and expressed his, his kind regards to the board, and he said, "Jim, I'm gonna support you for your, on your request."
Jim, are you about wrapping up here?
This is it, thank you very much.
I just said three minutes.
Thank you. I could've said a lot more.
I know, I understand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's great my language. There.
The next speaker is Rain, I'm not sure if it's orange or... What is it? Rain? It was like right there. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Is that... Yeah. Okay.
Hello, my name is Rain Wood, I am a student at Lenartown High School, I'm a senior next year, and I just want to say some things about the LGBTQ issues, you know, it's June. Specifically, though, Calvert, of course, had some things going against the safe place, safe place things, specifically the stickers, and I just wanted to kind of point out there why inclusion is so important, especially when it comes to such a small county like this, we're kind of on the conservative side. But, in general, most people in our town, in our schools, are just trying to live our life, you know? I am part of my theater department, I do my morning announcements for the school, and you know, some people know me, some people don't, but most of the time, no one really cares about being either gay or trans, but recently, I've seen some changes in that, like more homophobia and transphobia in the halls, especially in my school, and I believe that enacting the inclusion, school inclusion, uh, what's it called? Act, would not only make sure that we are safe and kind of making a step forward into, hey, we are going to protect the students in our schools, because more and more, we're going to more conservative sides, and it's just really good to know that we're gonna be protected. I know for a fact that I've been scared about that, I know my friends have, and it also just sets a good standard for people in the building, other students, and then years, years to come, as a precedent, that we are being supported. But in general, I love our school, I love the county, and I don't have much else to say about that. So, yeah.
Kim, can you, who's after Mr. Russell, that way we can keep team... There you go.
Good evening, Brandon Russell, I hope I am not giving you educators a COVID flashback, but I don't want to share my germs. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Inclusive Schools Resolution. As I was thinking about what to say this evening, it dawned on me that, though it pains me to say this, 20 years ago, I graduated from Chopticon High School as the class of 2005, and I was thinking about my experience as a student in SMCPS. At the time, I was not out living as myself, I was closeted, and that was primarily because of the treatment I saw of the one LGBTQ person that was living openly at the time, who was treated pretty mercilessly, and having dealt with bullying myself for other issues, I did not want to add that to the host of things that people could come at me for. But, it's kind of crazy to me that 20 years later, here I am with a couple of different hats that I wear in the community to represent the LGBTQ plus community, including as vice chair of Pride Southern Maryland. We are an organization that hosts a yearly Pride Festival in October. This year, our theme is Existence is Resistance, and I will leave a invite with the administrator for each of you. It's on October 12th this year, and I think that it's very important this year, more than ever, for us to host this event, to be in the community, representing the LGBTQ population, and creating an inclusive and welcoming space, which is what we do every year. And relating that back to the school system, I do think that there is room for improvement in the policies and procedures where LGBTQ students and staff are concerned. I took a look through some of the policies today, and with the exception of the harassment policy, any policy that mentions sexual orientation does not mention gender identity, so I'm concerned about the students who may identify as trans feeling particularly excluded, and I think that adopting this resolution would go a long way in showing that the school system does value the LGBTQ students and staff, that there is a tangible way that they're showing that value, that they welcome that community into the school system openly, and I think that displaying that, especially given what is going on in our neighboring county, is particularly important at this time. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jennifer Clancy.
Hello, everybody, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm proud to speak on behalf of my organization, PFLAG Southern Maryland, also as a proud SMCPS graduate and a proud middle school math teacher, having just finished my eighth year and 15th year in education, but eighth year teaching Esperanza Middle School. Most importantly, I'm an uncle to several SMCPS students, a ninth grader at LHS, a sixth grader at LMS, a third grader at Banneker, a pre-kindergartner at Oakville, and I'm requesting that the Board of Education adopt an inclusive schools policy to reinforce their commitment to all youth, including the youth I support at PFLAG, the students I teach, and the little ones that I trust to staff in SMCPS schools. I want to say thank you for what steps have been taken to create safe spaces for LGBTQ students. Specifically, PFLAG is a member of the Educational Equity Citizens Advisory Committee, where we represent families in the area. We've been able to do some work focusing on attendance and why LGBTQ students may not attend school. I also want to say thank you to the staff and students that are dedicated to inclusivity. PFLAG has had several events in collaboration with students from both Chopticon and Lenartown GSA, which is the Gay-Straight Alliance, or Gender-Sexuality Alliance, so we have some really great student leaders in our schools, and I think we need to listen to them. However, more needs to be done. This is some data from the 2022-2023 risk survey that all students take, I know that because I'm a teacher, so I had, I have to give it. This is the most recent data. 14%, or excuse me, 20% of LGBTQ students did not go to school at least one day in the last month because they felt unsafe. That's over double their straight peers. 9% of straight peers said they were threatened or injured with a weapon on school property, 20% of that for queer students. 16% of straight students reported bullying over the last year, double that for LGBT students. 28% of straight students felt sad or hopeless over the last two weeks, 64% of LGBT students felt sad or hopeless over the last two weeks. I hope that these numbers are having the impact that I'm intending, because some of these are double and triple. Four times as likely to seriously consider attempting suicide, that's from 11 to 45%. 10 to 36% on who's made a plan, 6 to 21% on who's attempted in the last year. But I do want to end with a positive note, which is specifically a note that I received this year from a student that highlights the importance of the efforts to create inclusive spaces. This is a short note, so I appreciate the extra time. Dear Mr. Quaid, thank you for your support during my year in your class. Thanks to you this year, I was able to come out to my mom, and I'm able to express myself more. I can't explain how much of an impact you made for me. Your classroom was my safe space. I've never felt so safe in a classroom. You are always supportive, you are always supportive and understood me. I'm gonna miss you when I leave. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ash Ashleman.
Choking up high again, Jennifer Clancy. I'm a mom of five here. I'm also a therapist, a school counselor, and want my child, I have two actually, who are queer, and my fourth grader experienced such excessive bullying that we had to remove them from your school system, to homeschool them. They're doing okay now, but in fourth grade, at the charter school, they had such amazing educators and staff who supported them in their journey to understanding themselves. Together, between myself and my child and these educators, we started the Welcome Club for any child in that school who felt unwelcome, that they had a place to go, to call home, and that room was packed, we had to get a bigger room. For two years, we, we stood by and hoped that the school system would stop the bullying, that the little kids in the halls would stop telling her to kill herself, that the little kids would stop telling my child to kill herself. That is a parenting and a cultural and a political issue that everybody needs to sit In removing my child, she has now thrived. You may have seen her about town, she wears a really cool cape, it says "Peace" right down the back, and it's in rainbow colors. She asked me to start a petition so that this community can welcome everyone, everyone, because isn't the world supposed to love one another? Aren't we supposed to care for one another, to stand for one another? And my now six, almost seventh grader, my rising seventh grader, has gotten so much courage, she is returning to school next year. She plans to go to middle school, and she plans to continue using her voice, she wants to join the Yearbook Club so that more people can have their voices recognized. She continues to go to PFLAG at every, every event, she is their biggest cheerleader, she spotted Mr. Paul, and she waved him down today and says, "Oh, Mom, Mr. Paul's here," and she had to rush over as if he was like the biggest celebrity. She wants to run to be Congresswoman in 2037, I hope you all have seen her online, she has been to Capitol Hill six times in two weeks to help fight the rhetoric that is happening against our children, and she is asking that this petition that we have put out is accepted not only by the Board of Education, but by all of her friends and her educators, it is to raise the peace flag in our county, to be fully, fully unified under that umbrella of love, solidarity, and support for one another's diversity and inclusivity. I appreciate it, if anybody wants to see me afterwards, I've got the QR code. All right.
The next speaker is Megan Anderson.
Hello, Board of Education. Queer people have never been on the same footing as people who aren't queer. It's a simple fact, backed by centuries, even a millennia of history. Sure, we've made leaps and bounds in recent decades, but we are still so far behind, a gap in rights and social stigma that is growing yet again. Just look at our neighboring county of Calvert, they got rid of the safe space stickers, have current policies pending that would ban the displaying of flags beside the American, and have gotten rid of practically all their diversity and inclusion policy. Homophobia and hatred are close to home, slowly encroaching on everyday life like it has in years past. Just the other day, in the Hooks and Hangers parking lot, a Vietnam War veteran, a man who swore to protect this country and all of its citizens, called me every slur he could think of, and ended his tirade by threatening to shoot me dead right there in the parking lot, all for the crime of looking queer and for the crime of having Pride bumper stickers on my car. No one, not my companions I had with me at the time, nor those I told about this, found this interaction nearly as funny as I did. It was a huge wake-up call for me. I found this interaction hilarious and absurd only because I had faced worse hatred and threats in the past, in the very walls of SMCPS public schools. I had groups of boys following me around, threatening to rape me to prove I wasn't a real man. I had someone rip down all the GSA posters from the hallways, I had someone smash my face into the wall while I was alone walking through the hallways because he heard me talking earlier about being trans. I've been pushed down the stairs every year I've attended, I've had the pride pins ripped from my bag and chucked in the trash right before my eyes. I've been barked at, called every, every slur in the book, and physically harassed, all within the school walls. Queer people are not equal, we are not safe. Every day, we run the risk of being killed, hurt, and harassed simply for being who we are. Nothing is going to change immediately, but there are ways to make it better. Your continued support, your continued assurance and efforts to make schools a safe environment will mean the world to queer children and adults attending or working for these schools. It won't fix everything, but it will make a difference. Codify our rights to exist in schools, ensure our safety and survival. Thank you.
Kristina Stone will follow Megan Anderson.
Hi, my name's Megan Anderson, I'm a psychiatric nurse, and my patients call me Megs. I went back from nursing after 16 years, I am a mom of four, and I originally went back into nursing because my son is autistic, and what I realized in this county is there are no psychiatric services, so I came back, and in this past year, what I've also unfortunately have noticed here is the impact of mental health, particularly on our LGBTQ plus community. I have met patients who would rather stand in front of a train, or run into traffic, or shoot themselves than live here in this county. It's heartbreaking because they're just who they are, and what I don't think people realize, and the responsibility of the school system, is that a lot of them don't have the support at home, and if you don't have the support at home, you seek the support at school, and it shows that only 21% of students nationally are actually out at home and are actually out in the schools, so it is your responsibility and duty to be accepting of those individuals. I've done admission assessments on patients, and I've had them cry and say, "No one's ever asked me my pronouns before." We do that, that's part of what we ask, that is who they are. That shouldn't be something that people don't expect when they're dealing with people who are helping them. Mental health for LGBTQ plus for adults, they are over three times likely to have experienced poor mental health over their previous month, and they're also twice as likely to be diagnosed with depression. Human Rights Committee Youth Survey found out half of LGBTQ plus youth screened positive for depression, and two-thirds screened positive for anxiety. 45% of LGBTQ plus youth seriously contemplated suicide, and while everything, you think of a national, there's actually increased rates of a rural community versus an urban community, and that's been shown in both surveys by the Trevor Project and Human Rights Campaign. So, it's, it's here, I've seen it, and listening to the stories today, there's just so many more, and they, they just, they just need help, they need you, they need the adults in their lives to help them, so they, they're, they're not having to get to the point where... the point where they're having a suicide attempt and in the hospital. And then facing the fact that they don't want to go home to a family that's not going to be supportive of them. So I encourage you guys to adopt the Inclusive Schools Resolution and to make this school system a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Christina Stone. I live in Great Mills and my pronouns are Deshie. I come here today on behalf of the Southern Maryland Democratic Socialists of America to encourage the sitting Board of Education to adopt the Inclusive Schools Resolution in St. Mary's County Public Schools. I have here a petition with over 600 signatures in support of this resolution as written. I was one of the unfortunate that signed the wrong list. We were supposed to get this a little while ago. This resolution seeks to codify rights and protections for LGBTQ students and staff within SMCPS and is modeled from the 2021 Safe and Inclusive Environment Policy, first implemented by Anamundale County Public Schools. It is no secret that public schools have been an ongoing battleground in a culture war being perpetuated by the right. The ongoing dehumanization of LGBTQ people has pulled focus away from the creating policies that would help everyone in favor of creating policies that seek only to harm the small handful of LGBTQ people across the country. It has also exacerbated an already ongoing crippling teacher shortage. The Board may recall the resignation of a Chopticon High School teacher after she was forcibly outed and ridiculed on local social media for being transgender. The harm created by anti-LGBTQ rhetoric impacts everyone everywhere. This resolution is meant to be a shield, a frontline defense to keep the rights culture war from causing further damage to our schools. Students and staff deserve the right to safe, age-appropriate educational materials that feature LGBTQ topics. Students have the right to learn about what they or loved ones may be experiencing, to learn about safe and correct terminology in classes as they pertain to cis, trans, and intersex bodies. Far too often, queer youth have no resources to explore their identities. Allowing resources and education on gender and hypothetical and queer identities only further promotes the safety of all students. I'll pose a hypothetical to you of a straight cis student who is allowed to learn about queer identities. That student may not continue to bully or harass another student just for being queer. This resolution not only protects queer students, but the larger student body as a whole. It is important to acknowledge that LGBTQ rights and protections are not just a human rights issue, but also a working class issue. Our teachers and staff members have to navigate a minefield of tone policing in the name of so-called parental rights. Across the country, teachers are being deputized to oust students to their parents without their consent, a truly insidious tactic that seeks to keep questioning students from seeking support within their community. If a student feels that they, it is important to remember that a student's identity is personal and sacred. If a student feels that they cannot speak to their parents about important elements of their identity, there is a reason. Sometimes the reason is as simple as, "I'm still wanting to learn more about myself before I tell them." Or, "If I tell my parents that I am trans, they may kick me out or abuse me." Teachers and counselors should be able to be a supporting adult for any LGBTQ student that seeks it without fear of retribution or retaliation from the school administration. You've heard from other former students like myself, you've heard from teachers, mental health advocates, parents, and family rights advocates about why this resolution is good for St. Mary's County. Please, continue to hear them fully with an open mind and an open heart. Thank you again for your time.
My name is Kyle Plogar. I'm a former SMCPS student and a current SMCPS employee. I fully support the Inclusive Schools Resolution being proposed to support LGBTQ plus students and staff throughout our system. Across the US, approximately one in four students identifies as a member of this community. LGBTQ plus young people who reported living in very accepting communities attempted suicide at less than half the rate of those who live in unaccepting communities. By promising protections to these community members, SMCPS can help create that safe and accepting environment. In total, there are nine demands in the petition, all focusing on protections for students and staff. Due to time constraints, I will only speak on one demand. Staff should not be required to report students to their parents or guardians for preferring a name or pronouns which affirm their gender identity. This demand allows promises that are actually already set by the SMCPS, by SMCPS towards the community. That promises: To students, we promise that they are safe and supported in their academic, social, and emotional growth. Not every LGBTQ plus student has a welcoming or safe environment at home. By providing a guarantee to our students, SMCPS creates an environment where students can feel safe. Student mental health has a direct correlation to student absenteeism, which in turn has a direct correlation to academic proficiency levels. Another commitment that SMCPS already makes to its schools is to provide a coordinated student services program to support students in their ability to access learning. Staff that support this goal include counselors, school psychologists, and school nurses. Students need to have trust in those staff members for effective counseling and support to exist. Adopting this part of the resolution will support that. The adoption of the full Inclusive Schools Resolution is only a tiny part of the support that we can give to our students, but it is important, is an important step to equity in education. Thank you.
My name is Mary Jo Willenborg and I am a parent of a former Leonardtown High School transgender student. I was asked today to speak by the DSA group, so I had some words to say, but I've been listening to these stories today and realized things are worse than when they were than when my kid was in school. It's very emotional. He had some very positive experiences as a transgender student and some negative ones. So I'm just gonna give you what my child experienced. On a positive note, there were two teachers that were very supportive of my son and their classrooms were a very safe place for him and he could go there. One was at the tech center, one was at Leonardtown High School. They went beyond Elliot's expectations and he accepted him, learned his pronouns, called him by the right name, and that made attending school for him much less stressful, less anxiety. He knew he had a place to go in the school. So he felt safer in this lesson being outed by others and pointing out that he was transgender. Surprisingly, he didn't have a lot of negative experiences with the students. He had a few, but it's very upsetting that things sound like they were, they were, they're worse now than they were eight years ago. Negatively though, although the school did allow him to have senior pictures taken with the traditional tuxedo, he was forced to take pictures with the feminine drape. We asked that that not be forced upon him, but the school made him do it. Additionally, the school would not allow his chosen name to be read at the graduation ceremony, as well as print a name in the yearbook. So you've got a male picture and a male walking up and there have said his female name and that's what is in the yearbook at this point. His dead name was read and listed, which he had not used all year, nobody even knew him by his dead name. This caused a lot of negative emotions for him and my family. There was clearly a male walking up there and announced the female dead name. This causes more stress and more anxiety for school, being at school than if they had just been allowed to call him by his, his chosen name. We don't look at the yearbook to this day because of that. It causes sadness and other negative emotions. Also, our son was part of the chorus, which was very important to him. It was a big extracurricular activity he was in and he requested to be aware to allow the male chorus uniform and it was denied. So that's another example of the administration, lack of understanding of the LGBT community and the support. And additionally, he did not use the male bathroom at LHS School due to the fact they did not feel safe there. And on the other hand, he was allowed to use it at the tech center. So there's kind of a disparity at that point between schools. The other comment that I had was quickly, there was another LGBT student who was here behind my son, had zero support at home. Obviously, these kids spend most of their time as teenagers in the school and that's where they're gonna get most of their support. He was unaccepted at home, so he was able to kind of be himself with other students in the school system. One year after he graduated, he passed. He suffered, struggled with drug addiction and I think, you know, and that goes to the demand of not requiring student or the administration to out or talk to parents about this. A lot of parents just can't accept it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kelly Keck. I live in Mechanicsville. You've already heard some about the Inclusive Schools Resolution and why it's so important. I'd like to provide my perspective from my experience as a crisis counselor, supporting LGBTQ plus young people. I spent five years working for a crisis hotline, both as a counselor and then also training volunteer counselors. Many of the young people who reach out to this hotline have been dealing with bullying or harassment at school. It was a topic that came up all the time. The majority of LGBTQ youth, 52% in one study, experienced bullying. And LGBTQ plus students who have experienced bullying in the past year are three times as likely to report having attempted suicide in that time. An important element of the Inclusive Schools Resolution is better training for teachers and other staff. Specifically, SMCPS teacher and staff training shall include content on how to speak appropriately about LGBTQ plus topics and on the high risk of suicide for LGBTQ plus youth who are not affirmed. If school staff are disrespectful or dismissive of a student's identity, this not only erodes a student's trust in that particular staff member, it also models disrespect for other students. Students who choose to bully their peers aren't picking their targets randomly. They notice which groups of people the adults in their lives talk negatively about and all the prejudices of the society that they live in. The fourth graders you heard earlier telling another child to kill themselves, they didn't come up with that on their own. And if we want schools where nobody is bullied, we really need, sorry, we need to move beyond platitudes about inclusivity. Because LGBTQ plus students are specifically targeted for discrimination, we need to be specific about LGBTQ plus inclusion. This includes respecting names and pronouns and making sure that students can see themselves reflected in the school curriculum. Trevor Project's mental health survey has repeatedly shown greater levels of support and acceptance associated with dramatic decreases in risk for attempting suicide, as well as better mental health outcomes overall for LGBTQ plus youth. And I know that's what we all want for all St. Mary's students. So I'm asking you to make the Inclusive Schools Resolution an official part of SMCPS policy, ensuring that LGBTQ plus students and staff have a safe, inclusive, and appropriate environment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for hearing from all of us tonight. My name is Thomas King. I'm from Leonardtown over in Medley's Neck Road. I didn't go to school at SMCPS, but my grandmother taught here for, I think, 40 years. And I went to school in Cecil County, which has a lot of similarities to this one. I'm here in support of the Inclusive Schools Resolution. I went to school in the 90s and it almost killed me. I barely survived. I know that's something that people will often say as a joke, but for me and countless others, as you've heard, it's not an exaggeration. Students in those days ruthlessly bullied kids who seemed at all different with homophobic slurs, whether or not they were actually LGBTQ. Schoolyard games like Smear the Queer were all too common and it wasn't just for fun. It was target practice. All it took to single me out for abuse by my peers was that I wasn't interested in playing those kinds of games. I would rather be playing this brand new game called Pokemon, and I know I'm dating myself here. After my entire class conspired to sign "Don't Be Gay" in my sixth grade yearbook, I came very close to taking my own life. I was 11. I was too young to even know or care what my orientation was, but I was old enough to know that I didn't want to live in a world where almost everyone my age in my day-to-day life was so senselessly cool. Lucky for me, even though I was a Boy Scout, I never quite mastered my knots, or I wouldn't be speaking to you today. And hearing what people have gone through tonight, I had it easy. I hoped that wasn't the case. The culture that drove me to that low, lonely point existed in classrooms and locker rooms because the adults in our lives allowed it. Some even encouraged it. Who do you think taught my class the name of that dodgeball game? The thing is, kids don't always know better, but adults do. Adults who work for schools have a duty to intervene to protect the kids in their care against hate speech and bullying, and most of them want to, regardless of their personal politics and beliefs. I've been so relieved to see attitudes shift in the past two decades since I was in school, to see that the students who followed me, many of them at least, didn't need to needlessly suffer under such a culture of cruelty. But now it seems that some people in this country miss being bullies. They want to drag us all back to the not-so-distant Dark Ages that nearly ended my life as a child, all in the name of protecting kids. You really want to let kids be kids? Keep them safe? Try raising them in a culture that doesn't vilify them, other them for their own identity, and doesn't force them to hide who they are and who they love for their own survival. As I understand it, this resolution aims to do nothing more than protect our kids. It seeks to stave off the demoralizing, dehumanizing abuse that some want to bring back by empowering kids and their caregivers with the basic dignity of self-identity that people like me were denied and attacked for to the point of breaking. We can't go back to the way things were. In light of today's Supreme Court decision and other recent intrusions by the federal government into the personal lives and rights of children and families all across America, it's more important than ever to adopt resolutions like this on a local level to protect our kids. We can't go back to the way things were. And if we do, it won't just be queer kids who get smeared. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Williams Colby. I was born and currently live in Leonardtown. I am also the proud parent of a St. Mary's County Public School student. So back in 1993, I happened to be one of the only openly gay students at Chopticon High School. I was 15. It was awful. I was teased, tormented, bullied, all the things we've heard about tonight. Luckily, it didn't get physical because my best friend's brother was gigantic and played football. He was on the football team and was popular. I wasn't the only gay student and I certainly wasn't the only LGBTQ person in the building. There were other students and even teachers who didn't feel safe enough to come out or to be themselves, and I understood why. Just walking through the hallways meant being ridiculed, threatened, called every slur imaginable. All that hatred was so distracting, it made it hard to focus on my schoolwork. When your main goal is just to survive the day, academics kind of fall to the side. Thankfully, and I'll be grateful to them, I had a few teachers who wouldn't allow that kind of language in their classrooms. They were people I could turn to when I didn't feel safe or when I was having an especially hard day. I also had great friends who stood up for me and reminded me that I wasn't alone and that life wasn't hopeless. I know things are better now than they were 30 years ago. However, from the stories I hear from my stepson, who will be a senior next year, thank God, we still have a long way to go. Students today, LGBTQ students today, still face a lot of bullying and isolation simply for being themselves. They still have higher suicide rates and self-harm than their peers. That's why I believe it is essential that we continue pushing forward with inclusive policies that protect and affirm all members of the school community. Students deserve the right to form LGBTQ plus student organizations. They deserve teachers and staff who are knowledgeable, trained, and empowered to speak appropriately about LGBTQ plus topics and issues. All students deserve dignity. They deserve to be treated equally. They deserve to be addressed by the name and pronoun that correspond to their identity. And the faculty and staff deserve the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of June 4th, 2025. Personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative, and supervisory, and textbook upgrade, Bridges Third Edition K-5 Mathematics. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
We have no action items this evening. We have one informational item, which is our May financial report. I think Ms. McCourt is somewhere. There she is.
It's so quiet. I feel like I want to break the silence. I'm sure that Ms. McCourt, this is going to be fascinating, riveting.
This is going to be riveting information.
Yeah, sorry.
So this is the fiscal year 2025 financial report for the month of May. Your budget totals $292.5 million, of which you have received through the end of May $289.2 million in revenues, with a remaining balance as of the end of May of $3.3 million. 98.85% of the revenues have been received year-to-date. On the expenditure side, we have $45.8 million of incomferences outstanding as of the end of May. Of course, the majority of that is associated with the salaries that will be paid out through the month of August. $282.2 million of year-to-date expenses plus incomferences, with a remaining balance of $10.2 million, representing 96.48% of your budget has been obligated as of the end of May. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, July 16. Executive session begins at 8, and the opening meeting will begin at 9. And with that, we are adjourned.